All right, Edward. All right, I'm gonna call to order the September 20th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand for the pledge. Mr. Crowley, will you lead us in the pledge?
My pledge only leads to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for those serving our country, both at home and abroad, and the folks down in Carolina that have suffered great losses. Thank you. Okay, first up on tonight's agenda is announcements. Ms. Frescatore.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow supervisors, professionals. Have some announcements on behalf of our Parks and Rec Department. Last call for the incredible edible veggie contest, which will close on September 21st at the Park and Rec office. Bring your heaviest tomato squash, zucchini, or eggplant to the office to be weighed Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the rec. Burpee Seed is sponsoring this event. Beginner's Guide to Getting Active, Tuesday, September 25th, from 10:00 to 11:30 at the rec, hosted by Doylestown Health. Educational seminar will be followed by a walk in the park. Fall Bird Walk at Warminster Community Park, Saturday, October 2nd, I'm sorry, Saturday, October 6th, at 7:30 a.m. Pre-register by calling the office. The annual Fall Golf Scramble will be held on Monday, October 8th, 2018, Columbus Day at Five Ponds. Join our event sponsor, Haprow Federal Savings. Best Ball Golf Outing, that is golfer-friendly and a ton of fun. Fees are $130 for a golfer, or $475 for a foursome. Dare to Be Aware Tick Prevention Seminar, Tuesday, October 9th, at 6:30 p.m. Learn how to protect yourself from Lyme disease. It's a formative workshop. Medicare Options Workshop, Monday, October 15th, at 6:30 p.m. at the rec, hosted by Del Bell Senior Advisors. Learn how Medicare works. Save the date for Friends of the Warminster Parks Casino Night, on Saturday, October 20th, at Ann's Choice. $35 tickets include beef, beer, $50 in chip, raffles, and gaming tables. Registration's open for the annual trip to Radio City Christmas Spectacular on November 17th. Tickets to the second mezzanine and motor coach transportation are provided. There's also some free time to spend in New York while you're there. Discount tickets are available at Parks and Rec, Rugel movie tickets, $9.50, as well as local attraction. All tickets are sold Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Park and Rec office, this is Warminster Community Park. For more information, please contact the website or the office at (215) 443-5428. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Frescatore. Mr. Monroe.
None this evening.
Thank you, Mr. McPhillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to remind everyone, if you have any unwanted or expired prescription medication, you can safely get rid of them over at the Warminster Police Department. It's the green box at the top of the steps. Later in the meeting, we're gonna be talking about the opioid crisis and how it's affecting our community, and I gotta tell you, it's not going anywhere anytime soon. And the best thing you can do is clean out your medicine cabinets of any of your prescription painkillers. Last month, we took back close to 90 pounds of prescription painkillers. So please, tell your family, tell your friends that if you have any unwanted, unused painkillers, please take them over to the police department. My next announcement is next Thursday, September 27th, I, along with the District Attorney, Matt Weinschewell, will be over at Ann's Choice, speaking at the Constitution Club. So if you're a resident of Ann's Choice and you're listening to this on TV, next Thursday, come on over and see me and the District Attorney speak at the Constitution Club. Then, next Thursday at 7:00 p.m., I, along with my friend Jason Crowley, will be at Nictivity Our Lord's Community Center, meeting with township residents. So if you have any questions or concerns about the township, people always do, come on over to Nictivity's Community Center, and you can speak with me and Jason Crowley.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. McPhillips. Mr. Crowley.
They're really coming out to see you, Dan. They're not coming to see you. I'm just there to take notes, folks. Just want to really quickly welcome to town the new businesses from July 20th through September 20th. Evolve Fitness Studio opened up at 880 East Street Road. Farm and Oven Bakery Bites moved into town at 340 Constance Drive, Units 1 and 2. And Hot Heads, which is actually products for the home and outdoors, took up residence at 66th Ash Circle. As always, we would like to thank these businesses for choosing Warminster Call Home and wish them nothing but the best here in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. I have a couple announcements. One was just texted to me, so forgive me for reading it off my phone. The Centennial Education Foundation will be hosting a night with Ray Dittenger on Wednesday, October 17th, at 6:30 p.m. at the William Tenet High School. Enjoy a tailgate dinner, book signing, and more. Tickets are $20 each, and can be purchased from any CEF, Centennial Education Foundation Board member, which sounds like a nice event to have Ray Dittenger in town. Also, I wanted to remind everyone that from started last night until Saturday evening is St. John Bosco's annual Fall Festival slash Carnival. In fact, my wife's here. That's gonna be our date night tomorrow night, to go over to the carnival. I know you're excited. But please do stop by and spend a few bucks and support St. John Bosco. The only other announcement I have, it's fall now, Labor Day's over, everyone's back from vacation. I just want to remind everyone to go schedule your colonoscopy and get your screening, especially if you're near the age of 50. You don't have to be 50, because I got it before 50, so. Or if you're having any issues, please go. Just want to remind everyone now that everyone's back from vacation. That's it that I have for announcements. I just want to give it to Mr. Bartle to cover our executive session prior to tonight's meeting.
Yes, thank you. The board met an executive session this evening in a room immediately adjacent to this one. Met at 6:00 tonight until 7:00. The board discussed various personnel matters, and also discussed a potential matter of litigation. Each of those matters is a legitimate subject of executive session pursuant to Pennsylvania Sunshine Law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartle. Okay, next up on tonight's agenda is presentations, which we have none. We're gonna go right into land use matters, public hearings, and ordinances. Item A is 2018-6, Land Development-273 West County Line Road. Mr. Bartle, you wanna cover that one?
Yes, thank you. I don't know whether you want to take the public comment on these matters before or after. Probably be a good idea for me to give them a summary of the resolution and then give Mr. Van Luvenay an opportunity.
Yeah, and we'll have board discussion, a board discussion, before we take action.
Very good. The matter before the board is a conditional preliminary final land development approval. The matter is the Patagon Storage LLC for property located at 273 West County Line Road. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing buildings and construct two new indoor self-storage buildings. Building A will be a one-story, 14,475-square-foot building with an office area, and Building B will be a three-story, 88,146-square-foot building, which both are defined together as the project. The project's improvements include consolidation of the two tax parcels, modification to the existing county line road driveway, construction of several paved driveways, and parking areas for a total of 45 parking spaces, a one-way exit to Park Avenue, an underground storage management facility, and associated utility, lighting, and landscaping improvements. The resolution has with it the standard conditions for approval, and also indicates that it be further resolved that 22 waivers are granted. All of those waivers have been fully reviewed by the township's consultants, and you'll note by the documentation that you have in your packets this evening that all of the 22 waivers have been recommended for approval by those township consultants. So that, in summary, is the resolution that the board has before it this evening.
Mr. Van Luvenay.
I can't add much to that. Mr. Bartle did a great job. I had my notes written. I could've read his notes and saved us all a little more time. But, Patagon, this is a indoor self-storage use. It is, as Mr. Bartle described, on two buildings. The front section of the front building is in fact two stories, which is more consistent with the two-story buildings that are along this Port County Line Road, that it reduces to one line. The back part is three stories built into the hill. This is a sloping site. The applicant did, back in June, obtain several dimensional variances from the zoning hearing board prior to filing the land development plan approval. At this point, after having had the waivers and the plans thoroughly vetted by township staff, I really don't believe there are any issues. We have reviewed Mr. Bartle's draft resolution. The draft resolution has revised...
I didn't know it was that bad, John.
Edward?
Draft resolution as revised is satisfactory to the applicant, and the applicant is prepared to accept all of the conditions, which include compliance with all review comments.
Okay, I mean, I want to touch on a little history of that property. That was approved for a land development previously, which was much higher impact than this.
I was just gonna comment, if you look through the list of permitted uses in the IO district, I would venture to say it'd be hard-pressed to find one which will have less impact, less traffic generation, all the kinds of things that are normally of concern, and yet, at the same time, it's a good catch generator for the township. It's a high-quality use, experienced developer-owner. It'll be managed by the largest self-storage company in the United States, so I think it's a real boost to the township and a great use for this property.
Can I open it up to discussion? Is there any board discussion?
I mean, the only couple, two, I guess, issues. Well, one, there's been some talk about a potential burial site, the old noble family burial site slash crooked billet. There's some members of historical interest were, I guess, under the impression that it existed on this property, and I know that there's been some work done with respect to our engineer that kind of indicated that, no, it was not on this property. So I think if we can discuss that...
Let me, I can speak to that, Mr. Monroe. Thank you. The concern about the fact it was on his property stems back to the 1933 deed, which was to a 16-acre property. This is a property slightly under five acres. The 16-acre property included encompassed properties located to the north of this site along Park Avenue. The burial site, the Altusent Noble Family Cemetery, is visible on the ground. It can be located. Our engineer, Mr. Witters here, has gone out to the site. He has identified it. I believe the township has done the same. And as a result of that, we are confident that it is not on this property.
Okay. Is there any way we can kind of included, I guess, in the event that, you know, while we're going through this process, that it is determined that it might be there, or is there anything we can do with respect to including that in the process?
Let me, I'd like to speak to that, if I might. I'll tell you, in my position, Mr. Bartle may or may not agree with me, but that is a private restriction. Private restrictions are not the subject of municipal regulation, so that if there is, if it were on this property, I would respectfully suggest that it still is not a subject for municipal concern. However, it's not, so.
You're right. I agree, and I don't think it would be in anybody's interest to, you know, be disrupting any kind of...
And we're not doing that, obviously. It would be, if anything, it's located off of the north side, which is the top of the board. Even if it were on the slate, you can see there's a substantial buffer between anything that we're disturbing on this property and that location. So even if it slipped by 10 or 20, 30 feet, it's still not going to be impacted by this development.
I agree. Just to, and I talked to Brian this afternoon, late today, I had my GIS consultant overlay, took the aerial map, took the tax parcels, overlaid that with, we did survey that back in 2013 as a favor to, I guess, trying to find that site. So, late this afternoon, no one else has that. I just passed it to Amanda, and now Brian's looking at it. It is just off the property line. You know, I'm not a surveyor, I'm an engineer, but we had our, we did the original survey. We overlaid our information. It's just off the property line. I have the photos. Amanda confirmed that actually yesterday, and I just did that through our GIS overlay. And I put the aerial on there for you guys to see physical features instead of looking at the survey plan, so I can confirm everything Mr. Van Luvenay just stated.
Thank you. Yeah, my intent here is just because we're a very active and engaged historical group, and I don't want to see them coming after you guys and, you know, or coming after us. If we can alleviate those concerns, and I think the work that you guys have already done...
And my client had to address that, too, because it is an issue of concern, because it shows up on the old title for this property, which was, again, a larger piece of ground, but it's not on our site.
And John, I would think that your client is very reputable, and if they did come across any historical artifacts during site work, that you would stop immediately and notify us.
Absolutely.
We can't enforce that, but we would think that you would have the good conscience to do that.
Daniel Lyman, principal, one of the principals of Patagon just came in. He came in from Oregon today just to be at this meeting tonight, so he had a little bit of the transportation issue getting here on time, but he's here. He's hoping that he gets to exercise his right or left hand. I'm not sure which, and sign a resolution tonight.
I'd like to agree with Mr. Van Luvenay that I believe that this would be a great economic boost for the township, and it is a great business for that piece of property, and I agree with you there.
Thank you.
I do have one other item to bring up, too. The waiver with respect to plantings along County Line Road, and it's always one of the first things that developers ask to be waived, and of course, I take issue with it every time, so I'm taking issue with it again.
Well, let me point out to you, if you looked at the site plan, we have a very narrow frontage on this property. We have a driveway, and there's virtually no room for plantings along there anyway. I mean, that's one of the problems. We have a substantial amount of landscaping. The plant man has put the plan up here. You can see we have a lot of landscaping there, but the driveway takes up approximately a third of County Line Road frontage. I would agree with you. If this was extensive frontage, it might make sense, but looking at that limited frontage, I think you can see why it's practically impractical, if that makes sense.
I see what you're saying. It's just that one little sliver there with the...
Exactly. That's all the frontage there is.
And actually, there's a clear site triangle for visibility.
Yeah.
That is shown. You guys can't tell it, there's too many...
That would take up another half of it.
Well, that actually takes up the entire rest. Now, the only place, and I, that's up to them to provide any type of low-level shrubs and whatnot along the building, but that's not what that requirement is for. It's for along the right-of-way. I did look at that a little bit more, too, today, and because of the site distance, I would not want to jeopardize anybody not being able to see after a few years of growth. So the engineer had agreed with that and did not plan anything.
Well, I mean, to be clear, there is some space there for some planting. You just have to offset it back from the...
Right, and that would be the only thing to do, is do something a little further back, and that's up to...
But it'd be beyond the buffer.
Okay.
If you're willing to work with that, I think we could do some type of low-level landscaping shrubs just further back. They actually look pretty nice between the building, but nothing formal along the right-of-way. You won't be able to see, so if that, and the condition is written, actually, that's to my satisfaction, so if you're agreement, I can work with their engineer just to add some more landscape in that area.
Thank you.
So you're okay?
That's fine with it. Yep. Absolutely.
Any other board members have any comments or questions for Mr. Van Luvenay or the applicant? Because if not, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Go ahead.
Yeah, just, it's not so much about land use, but I'm just curious. I mean, I like to think myself educated on companies, but I was not aware of the size of Patagon. Can, I know a little bit more about the company and how many employees they think they're gonna have there?
I think I know the answer to the employees, because these are very low employee sites, normally not more than two employees at a time, in my experience. Am I right about that, Dan?
That's correct. So there's secondary and tertiary employment through landscape maintenance and all the work that goes into the construction, but onsite every day, there's generally about two people plus a district manager.
Excellent.
And basically, your company, if you could make the speech, but I understand you and the original parent company have approximately, what, 13, 11, 13 sites in the original company, and this is your fourth or fifth, or sixth in Patagon? Something along those lines?
That's correct. So we've been developing self-storage facilities for about six years, primarily in Portland, Oregon, but as well here on the east coast, up to Portland, Maine, Boston, Massachusetts, Nantucket, as well as down here, and so we're pretty involved, and we like to...
Oh, I don't think the microphone's on. I'm sorry. They're giving me the cue from the back there. Sorry about that. Folks at home might want to hear you.
The green light is on, they just, maybe not close enough to his face.
Sorry about that.
Should I hold it like a DJ? So, Patagon is our new venture, GetSpace. If you go to GetSpace.com, you can see all of our facilities that we build. We've, our first round of facilities, and Patagon is our outside-of-Portland, Oregon development company. So we own and develop these facilities. We hire third-party management groups to oversee them for us, but we maintain ownership, and so we're very involved in everything that goes on, from the beginning all the way through.
So we're gonna be the first facility within this area, or where?
From us, yes. There are other self-storage facilities, but yeah, this is, we only do large, nice, big ones. Climate-controlled, it's kind of a second phase of what self-storage used to be, the single-story outbuildings. We keep them all more consolidated.
That was one of the variances, was from your 10-acre minimum lot size requirement, which really describes what we used to think of as mini warehouses, where they were larger properties. These climate-controlled facilities are more vertical, so they don't need the air, the space.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate that. You guys ever get that show, Storage Work, coming into your facilities?
We have, but yeah. They keep it pretty low-key of who they're visiting.
Yeah. Curious. I'm good. Anyone else? Anyone from the public want to comment on this before the board takes action? Go ahead, Mr. Scott, if you have a comment.
Just two comments and clarifications. I know there was two items deferred at Planning Commission. We don't have to work those out tonight. I believe under, it's number 16 in the resolution, 523.8, related to tree replacement. I don't think, I think the applicant doesn't want to plant any more trees on site, other than what we talked about tonight, along the frontage, but there is a requirement for a fee in lieu of tree replacement, whatever isn't done. I think that should be at least noted. We can work that out. We have a form, you've been through that before.
The applicant is aware of the fee in lieu requirement, and that was an understood condition, whether it was expressly stated or not.
Right, and then the other one was the sidewalk. I think everybody agreed not to have sidewalk, so that would be also separate, and that was deferred at Planning Commission's board. I would just suggest or recommend that be handled at staff level and determined like we've done in the past.
Well, right now, I think it's in this waiver number 22, isn't it?
Yes, yes. And, we can work that out. I didn't talk to your engineer beforehand.
I understand.
Okay, so 16 and 22 would include a condition that fee in lieu would be worked out at staff level and in similar fashion to other projects, so.
I think aesthetically, it looks better than other storage facilities that I've seen, so.
Thank you. It is a nice-looking facility.
Okay. Well, if there's no other comments, I'm gonna ask Mr. Bartle to craft a motion, if you would.
Okay. I would ask one of the board members to move that the Resolution Number 2018-34 regarding the applicant, Patagon Storage LLC for property located at 273 West County Line Road in Warminster Township, be approved as that resolution has been presented to the board.
So moved. Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatore, is there any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Warminster, and good luck with the project. And I guess if you guys come up with any artifacts or anything while you're doing your site work, we'd appreciate it if you would give us a howr.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Item B, waiver of land development, 90 York Road Car Wash.
Yes, Chairman. Yes, the next matter for the board's consideration is Resolution Number 2018-35. The applicant is Levittown Car Wash LLC. The property is 90 York Road in Warminster Township, and this is a conditional waiver of land development approval. So what you're actually doing is waiving the formal land development approval. This will allow the applicant to reduce the impervious coverage by removing two existing sheds and 248 square feet of the existing 4,968-square-foot car wash building, Use 39, and reconfiguring the paved areas in order to provide two-way access at the Second Avenue, a two-lane car wash entrance, 13 vacuum station parking spaces, three employee spaces, and several grass areas. This conditional waiver approval is subject to satisfying the following, and it includes all of the review letters and those provisions, and also the normal provisions that we include in this type of a resolution, having to do with complying with the various township requirements. It is also, there's also a provision in here for the granting of two waivers, and each of those waivers has been approved by the township consultants in their review letters, so there is no issue with respect to that. That's the resolution.
Matt McHughes here. Matt, it's good to see you again.
Good to see you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Bartle explained, this is a property located 90 York Road. It's an existing car wash facility that's been closed for a little bit, near a year at this point. It's located on York Road, but does not actually have access off of York Road. Access comes from Harvey and Second Avenue, and as Mr. Bartle explained, it's actually a reduction in net impervious surface here. We're cutting a little bit of the existing car wash building off, reconfiguring some of the drive aisles, and modernizing the car wash setup. It's gonna have a kiosk system, and then removing the vacuums that were originally along the side of the car wash building to the individual parking spaces. It mirrors what Mr. Lee, my client here, has in Levittown, a similar car wash facility there that's been very successful. So that's the provision here. We've obtained dimensional variances from the zoning hearing board for the locations of those vacuums, and the condition of the zoning board variances, and also in Mr. Kennon's letter, was the provision of a buffer area along the Harvey Road frontage, which we're willing to comply with. It was left to the discretion of the township staff when they recommended a sound barrier fence, which my client is willing to provide. So we're willing to comply with all the letters on the conditional grant of waiver of land development. I think the only two items that we're open for discussion would be that any curbing would be to the satisfaction of the township engineer, and we would do a fee in lieu of for a tree replacement.
So you're in agreement with the resolution that is presented?
That's correct.
Very good, thank you.
And let me get this straight, you're taking a business that's now closed and reopening it?
Absolutely.
That's good to hear. That's real good to hear. So if you're finished with your presentation, I'm gonna open it up to board.
That's all I have.
Comment? Any comments from the board?
I think it's terrific that the business is reopening and it's reducing impervious, and I, you know, I, there is a boom in car washes lately. I mean, it's, you never have enough options and enough competition.
So that'll be one of those automated jobs you pull up?
Call in, right, there's a kiosk there, and then you go through, and then you pull up the vacuuming car.
Great.
Terrific.
Okay.
I think this car wash, originally was since the 60s, the original one, yeah. It's, actually, my father owned the business across the street from this, from the car wash, but yeah, it's great to see that you're bringing it back and...
And they're putting significant investment. I mean, I know we're talking about a small land development project, but the interior of the car wash facility is being significantly upgraded, putting a lot of money into this facility.
That works for me, because I go to Altamontes at 11:00 a.m. every Saturday, and I can roll out of there and go right across the street.
I do use the car wash.
Yes, that's wonderful news for me as well.
We're mounting it the last couple of years.
It's falling into some disrepair.
So it's good to hear that you're gonna fix that up and open the business.
I actually took my car there before prom, so.
Is that right? I should show in your age.
That matches our motivation.
Before I ask Mr. Bartle to craft a motion, is there any comment from the public? No? Any other from the board?
Actually, before, the one other comment was the curbing. And I know we recommend curbing around the landscape islands, try to keep people from cutting through. I understand, and I won't be the bad guy here, there's some drains concerns if we did the curbing. Is that what your engineers, he'd rather not do the curb, it's just gonna be grass.
Right, I'm not gonna pretend to be an engineer, but my understanding of speaking I'm not going to pretend to be an engineering, but my understanding of speaking with Mr. Cunningham was his concern with the curbing was that it would be drain, the possible drainage issues. So we're agreeing that on the, you know, as we do the construction, if Craig believes it's appropriate in certain areas, we'll certainly do that.
Well, I'd rather not, I don't typically, actually, I've never done that because then I'm the bad guy doing construction. We don't have it escrowed, and I'm fighting with no escrow posted, so.
We prefer not to do them.
And that's where I figured we'd just resolve it tonight, so I just want the board to be aware. Our main concern was with a lot of traffic, and I know, I'm mainly talking about, there's almost like a square at the end of the building there. It's hatched. There's a lot of movement there, and people are going to just drive over the grass. I mean, if there's no curb, it was more for to separate that, but I understand the cost of this. It's a redevelopment. We don't want to cause any drainage problems either, so if you want to waive that, that's fine. Curbs also require along the side of the building where there's also grass. We're just concerned about the flow of traffic, but it's internal, it's not going to impact the existing roadway, so.
And this is how it's always been set up as well.
Yeah, it's been set up like that.
You support the waiver?
I'll support it. I don't want to defer it, and I know your engineer had already addressed it with our office, so I would, I don't know if the resolution reflects that, but.
Yeah, we would prefer the waiver if that's possible.
Okay. Does the resolution reflect that, or do we need to add that?
No, you would have to, you would have to add that. You just give me the section.
512.3, number eight in our review letter. 512.3 would be waiver of providing a concrete curb around the grass islands within the parking areas.
Okay.
All right.
Got it. Waiver of concrete curb.
Concrete curb.
Right.
Within the parking areas. That we maintain as grass then? Is that correct?
All right. Then when I speak of the resolution tonight, we will modify the resolution to include 512.3 waiver of concrete curb within the parking area as a waiver, so that would make a total of three waivers then in the resolution you're passing out this evening.
I'd rather have that documented at this time, so, okay. Is there any other further discussion? Mr. Bartle, if you would mind crafting a motion for the board?
Yes, thank you. The motion would be to move the Resolution Number 2018-35. The resolution for conditional waiver of land development approval for applicant Levittown Car Wash LLC for property at 90 York Road, Warminster Township be approved, not only with respect to the conditional waiver approval, but also with regard to the granting of the now three waivers that are included in the resolution.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley? Any further discussion from the board? Comments? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. Good luck with your new business.
We'll have a revised resolution sent out to you in the morning.
Okay. You'll have him sign it then. Thank you very much. Thank you everyone.
Good luck with your new business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, it's good to see you again.
Amen.
Next up is Item C, authorization to advertise intermunicipal animal control ordinance. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A little background on this. For a number of years, Warminster Township has operated a very robust animal control operation. There are other townships, other neighboring townships that over time have got on board, and we've become kind of a regional animal control. The other townships through the years that have joined us include Warrington, Warwick, Northampton, Upper South, and Ivyland. The contract that we're operating under is quite old, I'd forget the exact year, but what's happened over time, as does with most contracts, the amount of funds we receive from the different municipalities has become out of balance, and Warminster was receiving kind of the short end of the stick. So what we did is did an analysis and examined the actual calls that each municipality was undergoing, and put together an agreement between each municipality that would reflect the share of the cost of animal control divided proportionally between the municipalities based on their call volume for the past 12 months. And by the way, when I say "we," I'm really mean Amanda. Amanda did a lot of work for all of this, and I got to tell you, it is, it's a relatively simple agreement. However, trying to get six municipalities to agree to something is a little bit of a challenge, so I give her a lot of credit for getting that done. So this is the ordinance which would allow this to occur. As you know, intermunicipal agreements for some reason do need an ordinance in place. In your packet, you'll see an example of ordinance and an agreement with the township of Warrington. Just know that you're not only authorizing the advertisement of that, you're authorizing for every single municipality, but it's the identical ordinance.
Understood. Okay. Is there a motion to advertise the intermunicipal animal control ordinance?
So moved.
Mr. Crowley, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Fresketor, any discussion? I just have a comment. Thank you, Amanda. I know this was some monumental task, so.
Ditto.
Yes. Any discussion from the public? I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is public comment. Township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items subject to five-minute guideline as recognized by the chair. Darlene?
Darlene Baker, Friends of Warminster Parks, and I live in 1537 Mulberry Circle. Does anybody want a golf scramble outing? Thank you, Kathy, for talking about it, but did anybody want to golf? Everybody left.
I'm already playing.
That's good. It's fun, and it's on October 8th. Also, we have Touch a Truck coming up on Saturday, October 27th, so that's always a fun time for the kids. I am here to talk about our annual fundraiser for Casino Night, so hopefully all you supervisors are selling your tickets that you have, and what we really do need is sponsors. I think people are worn out from Warminster Day, so I need you guys to help us get sponsors. We're looking for monetary sponsors. We're looking for sponsors who will give us gift baskets, even individual items for gift baskets. If anybody has any contacts that we could get, fill these tickets for a game next spring because I don't think they're going to go all the way this year, or an Eagles game, even if it's a really cold one, that would be welcome. We'll put them, you know, we'll put it in a gift basket. We do go out to the local sports teams, but the major teams, they don't, you know, everybody's asking them for tickets, so they don't give them out, so if anybody knows anybody that we could get them, or if they have a vacation house, Shore Mountains, we'll even take an off-season weekend if anybody knows where we can get that. So I do have tickets tonight if anybody wants to sell them, but since you're supervisors, you're selling your own tickets. That's good. Get them sold. I did bring some brochures for the auction items, and they are, all the auction items that we're auctioning off, this is a little bit different this year. In addition to the raffle baskets, we are going to offer some auction items because it's a different way, we're hoping a creative way of making additional funds for the parks. And there were six trips that I've talked about multiple times. I actually have the details for the wine tour because, Brian, they told me you're very interested in the wine tour.
I am.
So.
Thank you.
They have the wine tour details. It says what all the inclusions and exclusions are. All the details that are on the boards over there, they are on the Friends of Warminster, FriendsofWarminsterParks.org website on the events tab. So all the PDFs of all the details of the trips are on the website.
And Darlene, let's back up to the Friends for a second because just so the public knows, the Friends are the ones that raised the money for all those nice green and white signs in front of all of our parks.
Yes.
And that was through.
And that was through the Casino Nights in the past.
Casino Nights and beef and beers.
And beef and beer. So those, all those nice signs that we replaced that are kind of vandal-resistant, they're not wood, so they can't be lit on fire.
And they've been around for a few years now.
They've been around for probably three, four, some of them five years.
Five years.
Yeah.
So if anybody's wondering what the Friends do, this is what they do.
Yeah, and we are a 501(c)(3) organization, so for any sponsors and stuff that we do get, you know, they can, it's tax deductible, so that's another thing. We are recognized 501(c)(3).
I got your brochure. Would you mind sending me the solicitation letter so I can?
Yeah.
If you mind emailing that, email it to all of us if you would.
Yeah, what I do have is, I have the solicitation letter. I also have, and I'll give you the updated posters that was over there, and again, it has on the back, I think I gave the Splash Park things, the funding, it'll all go to the Splash Park amenities, so I'll give you this brochure tonight, but I can mail you all the electronic versions of everything.
Nice colored stuff. I see retirement's treating you well. Plenty of time.
Thanks, darling.
So while you're doing that, Darlene, I just want to mention that I've been to the past two Casino Nights, and I'm telling you, it's a really good time. They teach you how to gamble if you're not familiar with it. They're very patient with you, and it's a lot of fun. It really is. I really recommend coming out for it. Hey, my chips still good from last year? I had a bunch. I didn't realize I had.
No, the chips are not good.
They're not? I tried to, I tried to spend them at the Madison afterwards, but they wouldn't take them.
No, you're supposed to turn the chips in for the raffle tickets.
I know, and I forgot. When we got home, I was like, oh my God, I got $100 here.
To be honest, they won't know that they're from last year, I'm sure.
Do you have the same vendor?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll bring those chips with me then.
Frank, the vendor that, the vendor that we have is very, is very good, and like.
Yeah, he's terrific.
Like you said, like, I know, I forgot everything they taught me years ago when I went through this, but, you know, I don't know how to play craps, but it looks fun, so they're very, you know, they'll help you through it. So it's kind of a non-way, it's an easy way to learn how to play the different games.
Anyone that's interested, please do come out. It's a fun night. It really is.
And if you want to know how to play Blackjack, I'll teach anybody how to play Blackjack.
Awesome.
So keep it on your calendar and sell, sell, sell those tickets, and please help us get sponsors.
Okay, thank you, Darlene. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, Heather Lipinski. I'm not a resident, but I'm the adult services librarian at the library, and we just wanted to bring up a few events that are coming up that we thought people would be interested in. On Tuesday, September 25th, at 6:30, the League of Women Voters, the Bucks County Chapter, will be at the library, and they'll be presenting, preparing for the November election, so they'll be providing resources for people so that they can learn about the candidates and the different issues. And then the next day, on Wednesday, the 26th, the A Woman's Place will be at the library to discuss teen dating violence, and this is a program that's for both teens and adults, and it provides warning signs to look out for and different community resources on how you can support teens that might be dealing with violence. And then lastly, in October, Peace Valley Nature Center will be coming to talk with the kids. This is a program for kids K through sixth grade, and it's on animal skeletons, so they'll be looking at different animal skeletons and learning about the science around skeletons and looking at like things like their teeth to determine what animals might be eating. So that's a great program for the kids. So we just wanted to let the community know that we're doing these programs as well as like our normal, we have movie nights, book clubs, AARP Safe Driver, things like that.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Heather.
Thank you. Or any other public comment? Sure. Come on up, man.
Matt Penji with the Warminster Historical Society. I just want to invite everybody out on October 27th. We'll have an event over at the Warminster Library. We're inviting all the historical societies in Warminster out. If everybody could come out and support all the groups, and we're also holding documentaries, so if everybody could come out, sign up on our website, warminsterhistory.org, and just come out, five minutes of your time, and just talk, you know, a little bit about growing up in Warminster, a little history of Warminster, you know, just a little, little pickin' of the brain. So, yeah, October 27th from 11:00 to 3:00, and Warminster Library. Thank you.
Matt, before you go, I just wanted to give you a shout-out. I know we had communicated last week.
Right.
I think you're doing a tremendous job.
I appreciate that.
You've really put this organization together in a hurry.
I appreciate it, yeah. Thank you.
Do you want to share that with Matt? I mean, that was brought up in the last land development about the burial site.
Right. Yeah. I haven't seen that.
I'd be glad to provide that with you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's, Mr. Kennard and Gilmore did a little extra work, and there's another map in here that you probably don't already have.
Okay.
You can have that.
And I'm seeing your ribbons all over town. Why don't you give that a shout while you're here?
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Because everyone starts to see these ribbons that are popping up, signs and things around town.
Yep. The Warminster Historical Society's holding Ribbons of Time. It's going on until December. You can visit our website at warminsterhistory.org. There's an area to sign up. You can sign up your home on there. Each home has a different year-colored ribbon, and just get ahold of us, and we'll get in touch with you.
So each colored ribbon is that says the years that your house was built or the days of the property?
Correct, yeah.
We see them on public buildings as well.
Right, yeah. You'll see them through Warminster. You'll see them on some of the houses. You'll see them on the Warminster, you know, monuments in each of the corners.
In case anyone's wondering what that.
Yeah.
Yes? Well, keep up the good work.
I appreciate it. Thank you for the support. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Schuster, it's a long one tonight, so I think you're going to condense the pool.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. When I get there, I'll speak a little bit about that and condense it. On tonight's consent agenda, as Mr. McKee said, a number of items. Item A is approval of the minutes from your August 2nd, 2018 meeting. Item B is approval of proclamation to declare National Adult Daycare Services Week. Item C is authorization of the execution of an MOU between the township and the radio union regarding Sunday hours and lunch breaks. This is a very narrow scope we're talking about here. There was a slight change in working hours which actually would have resulted in some employees being required to take an unpaid break in the middle of their four, roughly four-and-a-half-hour shift. The mutual beneficial part gives the employee the ability to go ahead and waive that requirement so they can work through that and get paid. Item D is approving the opening of a Pliget account for the investment of township funds. We're always looking for ways to get higher interest rates, which we're getting right now with the current bank. Pliget is a consortium which is widely used, and in fact, the township has participated in Pliget before. I'm not sure in what form, but we have, there was evidence that we were enrolled in the past, so this will give us the right to deposit some of our funds there at a higher interest rate if we choose. Item E is approval of Resolution 2018-37, authorizing township manager to execute all documents related to the Green Light Go Grant Program. If you recall, a number of months ago, we received word that we did receive the Green Light Go Grant Award in the amount of $225,000 for detection and timing improvements at five intersections. This would give me the authority to sign all the paperwork that goes along with that. Item F is authorization to advertise for the purchase of an articulating loader. This would be bid 2018-07. This would be bid 2018-07. This is really for the Park and Rec Department. There was capital funds budgeted for a piece of equipment. In Karen's deliberations, she decided to change it to a different piece of equipment and scrape together some other funds that were unexpected, unexpended, and another line item. And looking at this piece of equipment, it's incredibly versatile, would speed up all the activity, not all the time, but some of the maintenance activities they have there, and even, I believe she said, eliminate some manual activities and to put some more automation in place. Item G is another bid. That would be authorizing the bid for the golf course bar renovation. I think, as most of you know, we were planning to do that earlier in the year, but as time wore up, we decided not to do it right in the middle of golf season. So now that we're winding down with golf season, we do have some renovations due in the bar area, restaurant area, that would open it up and make it a more palatable venue for all kinds of events. And of course, this would all come out of the golf fund. This is not tax dollars. Item H is release number one from escrow from Burger King in the amount of $173,502 as recommended by the engineer. Item I is Delaware Valley Residential Care, release number one from escrow, in the amount of $631,167 as recommended by the engineer. Item J is Hart School Redevelopment, release number 17 from escrow, in the amount of $71,482 as recommended by the engineer. And item K is Home to Suites, release number three from the escrow, in the amount of $120,375 as recommended by the engineer. I will not read unless requested. Items L through T, those are all releases for pool escrows for constructions that have occurred presumably over the summer.
Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McPhillips, any discussion?
Just, I'm looking forward to that renovation. And one of the things that I've really been impressed with is that menu they have, and I think it's an untapped potential.
Yeah, I was going to mention as a comment that we had our fantasy football draft there two weeks ago, and they did a tremendous job of setting the venue up for us. And anyone that does fantasy leagues should really consider doing it at the golf course in the future.
And it was, I thought it was pretty reasonable.
Oh, it was real reasonable, and they set it up real nice for it. It was a fun night. In case, for those of you who don't know, the, most of the board of supervisors and manager here are involved in a fantasy football league. And Mr. Monroe's the commissioner.
The draft night was a fun night if your team didn't turn out to be 0-2.
That's right.
Like mine.
But I have them.
First pick.
I don't even remember.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further comment from the board? Is there any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item six, finance report. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would ask for a motion to approve the July transfers, the August transfers, the bill list dated August 16, 2018, in the amount of $1,275,324.56. The supplemental bill list dated August 30, 2018, in the amount of $739,888.75. And the bill list dated September 20, 2018, in the amount of $1,144,594.88.
Okay, is there a motion? Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Monroe, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up is August financial statement. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to speak more about the finances in my budget presentation a little farther in the agenda. However, I can say that we are roughly on budget. I mean, some line items are up, some are down. Obviously, some of our line items are a little more fluid than others when you look at building permits and a few other line items. But right now, when I say we're on budget, we did budget for an approximately $1.6 million deficit in the general fund, and it appears, the numbers that we're seeing, that is coming to fruition. So we're getting new projections in all the time, but that's the latest information we have. The golf fund, I would say, is still, I don't want to say struggling, but they've had a rough summer with the incredible amount of water that's just been coming. It's been raining or wet pretty much every other day, weekend, some weekends have been a washout. They've been saved by the fact that there have been an increase in number of events, increased in number of outings, but it has just not been a good year for any golf course.
Yeah, that's no reflection on spirit golf.
No, not at all.
Because I think they've done a tremendous job. They can't control the weather. They've done a tremendous job.
But that is, that's what the financials are looking right now. And of course, you have the full financial packet, full financial statements in your packet.
Yeah, and I mean, we're in August now, barring some miracle, that deficit is going to come to fruition.
It's definitely going to come to fruition. It's just a matter of what the size is, yes.
And we can talk about that later when we get into budget time. The next one is budget amendment, Resolution 2018-36. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, the second-class township code permits the board to make budget amendments after the third month of the year has concluded. This will be the fourth such amendment this year. In this amendment, we are transferring approximately $75,000 of assigned fund balance. This is monies that were dedicated previously from a development for Jacksonville Road over to the highway fund to complete the improvement project over there. The other items include, in the general fund, there's the increase, putting money aside for a fire study, which is on your agenda in a little bit, as well as police supplies. All of those are budget neutral and taking from other line items. The library fund, there is a very small budget neutral amendment. In golf, it's probably where, the golf fund, that's probably where the largest amount of activity occurred. It is all budget neutral, but it is simply a reconciliation. The budget was crafted with a different, the previous model that we were operating under. The budget has now been updated to reflect the fact that everything is outsourced, and we have spirit golf in there managing everything. So this is updating all the line items and making it appropriate, and it's going to carry through into the 2019 budget. So that's mostly housekeeping. It's all budget neutral. And also, in liquid fuels fund, you'll see another budget neutral amendment there. Some additional funds being put in the road projects line item to pay off the, like the last of the road projects we had, and taking from some other line items of unused funds.
And speaking of roads, I've been noticing there's a lot of repair work going on around town now. They're in the repair process. I've been noticing.
After they get done paving, they go right into pothole repairs, so.
Well done.
It's never, it never ends.
A few years ago, we weren't paving roads till the end of October, so it's wonderful to see August, September, it's finished and we're just doing repairs.
They get the programs done very quickly.
Phenomenal job.
Thank you. And so I'd ask for a motion to approve that budget amendment.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatour, any discussion?
I just want to say, great job on the roads, by the way, because it is very noticeable.
I will pass that along. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have no unfinished business tonight. Going to move right to new business. Consider authorization to advertise waste hauling bid. Bid 2018-9. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is that time again. This comes around every few years. I think it's been seven years since the last time the township went out to bid. This bid was gone over at length by the solicitor's office. They did a great job putting things together. We also circulated it with department heads and got their feedback and put together what we think is an acceptable bid. Based on information I've received from the board, we did make a couple decisions. Previously, the bid was done with a three-year and a five-year option with a plus-two-years options on either one of those. We've just narrowed it down to say, we're only doing one. It's five years plus a two-year option. So the three-year option is off the table. The second thing that's being changed, excuse me, it's not being changed, it was bid out this way last night, we're going to continue to deal with it this way. We're bidding it with and without toders. So you're going to get prices with toders and without. So you can make that decision later on when the bids come in. And the final change that I wanted to point out is when this was bid back seven years ago, the agreement called for a 6:00 AM start time, which is actually in violation of our own ordinances. So the option was either change our ordinance or have it start at 7:00 AM. The feedback we got from the current hauler was that most municipalities have a 7:00 AM start time. So this bid will have likewise a 7:00 AM start time. It's on your agenda for consideration, and if you are so inclined, can authorize us to advertise.
I'm going to ask for a motion to advertise. I mean, we're going to have much more discussion on this as the process goes forward. This is simply to advertise so we can start receiving bids, so.
So the minutia, such as like, you know, a holiday makeup day, or, you know, that's all discussed further down the line, or?
No, that is in the current bid.
That is in the current bid.
Yeah, so you should look at this bid as almost the agreement.
Okay.
You know, and Mr. Bartle can correct me if I'm wrong. I imagine the agreement, whenever it's done, is going to be very small. It's just going to reference or incorporate the bid specs.
You're not wrong.
It's the nicest thing you've ever said to me.
You're absolutely correct.
With the exception of the totes, that's something that we will decide down the road.
The totes you can decide upon, yes. And also, the number of delivery days.
Okay.
Right now, we have two days. We're bidding it for both one day and two days. So you'll have all those prices laid out in a grid, and you could pitch, pick whatever the option is going to be.
Is it like electronic pickup, like we've been talking about, like with televisions and all that kind of stuff? Is that also included in?
That is not included. We've had, with our current provider, difficulties in getting them to come, because they're just not set up for it. However, we've had a great relationship with PAR Recycle Works, which has just done an event last week, and we've been doing this two times a year. I'm thinking it might be even worth doing it more than two times a year, because I understand there's been some traffic issues whenever they have those events.
It's parking.
But they're certainly very popular. But no, this is not going to include electronic waste. It seems that that is a little bit of a different animal, and that would be problematic to include it.
Thank you.
And the service that we have right now with the company, I forget the name of it now, that.
PAR Recycle Works, yeah.
That does our e-waste. They're doing a phenomenal job.
Yep.
And there is a big need for it in the township, so I'm really glad that we were able to provide it.
That's been successful.
Yes, it has.
Okay, I think I asked for a motion to consider advertising.
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McPhillips, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up is, and we'll have much more discussion on this in the months to come, I'm sure.
Can I just make one final comment on that?
Please do.
At this time, I would advise anyone not to have any conversation with any waste hauler, and refer any of those comments to either myself or Mr. Bartle.
Got it. Good advice.
We've been warned. Okay.
Hold on.
Next up, consider approving letter of engagement with Scott &amp; Scott. Mr. Bartle, you want to touch on that?
Yes, thank you. Of course, all of us have heard much about the opioid crisis in the country, which Mr. McPhillips spoke of earlier this evening. There's been a fair amount of discussion as well with respect to opioid litigation, wherein municipal governments are attempting to receive as compensation that which they've had to put out as a result of the behavior of some of the drug companies and related entities. The, most recently, here in Bucks County, the county began to pursue its rights with respect to that which it has lost in revenue as a result of the opioid situation and the activities of some of the defendants, or alleged activities of some of the defendants. That being the case, we followed suit here, and based upon the discussion of some of the supervisors here and the manager, we began to explore what had taken place in Bucks County and what our opportunities were here in Warminster with regard to attempting to pursue the same type of litigation. And we found that Bucks County was using the firm of Scott &amp; Scott. We had the opportunity of meeting with them as a potential matter of litigation. We met with them and the board in executive session and discussed the matter. And they provided us with an arrangement, a fee arrangement, for the handling of this matter, with them as the counsel that would be handling it, along with a law firm that would be, would be the local counsel, and that was the firm of Bonnie, Zack, and Snyder LLC. The agreement is a relatively standard-form contingent fee agreement. The fee that will be paid to the Scott &amp; Scott Law Firm will be only based upon the amount of money that they recover in either litigation or in settlement. I believe the amount was 25%. It is according to the agreement. It's 25% of the amount that they recover minus fees. So they would, the fees that we would, we would have to pay to them, that would first come out of any settlement or litigation and be reimbursed to us. And by that, I'm talking about the cost, not the, not the legal fees, but the cost of the experts and the like, which they would have to retain with respect to that matter. So the cost would come off the top. They would be reimbursed to us from any matter that they settled upon, and then, or received a judgment with regard to. And then they, we would pay them as a legal fee, 25% of the balance, and the township would then retain 75% of that money. So your exposure with respect to this matter are the, are the costs of litigation, filing fees, expert fees, and the like. That, if we did not recover an amount, if Scott &amp; Scott could not win the lawsuit for us or receive a settlement, the township's exposure would be the costs of the litigation, and only the cost of the litigation, not any attorney's fees, either to the Scott &amp; Scott firm or to the Bonnie, Zack, and Snyder firm. You should also note that pursuant to the agreement, any amounts to be paid to Bonnie, Zack, and Snyder come out of the fees of Scott &amp; Scott and not out of the money of the township. Other than that, it just talks about the responsibilities. Both sides have a responsibility to exercise best efforts. We'll cooperate with our counsel in all regards, which is, of course, to our benefit, and they'll do their best for us in the litigation. Either of us have the right to terminate this at any time with, terminate the relationship at any time, and this will be signed by Mr. Brogie, Donald Brogie, who is going to be the lead counsel on this for Scott &amp; Scott, and it'll also be signed by our chairman and also the secretary of the board, Mr. Schuster.
Okay. All right, do you want to take action? Let me ask for a motion first to.
Motion.
Approval letter of engagement with Scott &amp; Scott, and we can have some discussion. Okay, I'll second. Ms. Frescatour, motion. Mr. McPhillips, second. Then we can open it up for a little discussion.
I think Scott &amp; Scott is very impressed with their law firm. They have an excellent track record, and they are very, they're experts in these big litigation cases. And I think this is a good move on behalf of the township to recoup the loss of the finance, on the financial end of it. We have the personal part of it with treatment and all that, but then you have the financial part of it, too, where your emergency services are involved. So I think this is a really good move for the township, and I'm glad that we're taking this action.
Great, yeah.
That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I would agree with you, Frank. There's a growing number of townships within Bucks County that are either considering legal action or starting to take legal action. Here in Warminster, I mean, this is certainly something that we just think of yesterday. Back in 2012, is when we first installed our Take Drug Take Back box, and I think we're up to close to 4,000, 4,000 pounds of medications that we're taking back. We've had a community panel discussion here. I see Chris McDonald and Chief Donnelly here. They were part of the panel discussion, and the room was full as education process of what's going on. We've had our first responders carry Narcan. And as the board members know, every time an overdose happens, we all get notified. And it comes to a point where enough's enough, but as you peel back the onion, this is costing taxpayers more and more money to combat against this opioid crisis. And I would hope that this legal action would do two things. One is try to recoup some of that money that we've been spending to fight against this, because we're certainly not going to be able to recoup the lives that have been lost in our community. And two is to send a message to the pharmaceutical companies, the marketers and distributors, that the product that they're promoting is addictive. So that's what I'm looking to see.
Well, I know, we met as a board with this law firm, Scott &amp; Scott, and they were incredibly impressive. Their client list was incredibly impressive. But what struck me the most is the people that they're going after here are these companies that, in my opinion, are very unethical, that just take these things that they know are so addictive and just dump them on the market. And more and more communities like us are getting together to file class actions suits to put a stop to it, because it's destroying not only our communities, but our country. It is. I mean, it's a problem. I don't care what community you live in. It's a problem. So I was incredibly impressed with them, and I really hope this goes somewhere.
What both of you gentlemen have said is certainly true. Just so that we're clear to the public, no one is trying to stop the pharmaceutical companies from the legitimate sale of these prescription drugs, which are sometimes unfortunately necessary for the, for ill people to have these things. The nature of the litigation and some of the evidence that will be used in the litigation is the volume, the sheer volume of drugs that are produced in all these communities, that they're, the allegation is that someone must know that it is grossly beyond the amount or volume that is necessary for the legitimate distribution of these drugs. And therefore, people have been acquiring these drugs for addictive, for addictive situations, for their, for their drug addiction, and they've been used and sold on the street and the like in ways that are detrimental to the community and cost the community money and, as Mr. McPhillips points out, lives, very importantly. So that's the nature of what we're, what we're attempting to combat here. So that's the nature of what we're attempting to combat here. And the nature of litigation will be not only with respect to damages but also with respect to injunctive relief as against the people against who these allegations are made, the companies.
We were given some examples from this law firm of companies that they're a small community of a couple thousand people. Thousands and thousands of these pills are dumped into that community. Like, wait a minute, something's not right here. I mean, this is what they're trying to combat and I couldn't agree more.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
Is there any other comment before we take action? Any from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. So you'll keep us posted, Mr. Schuster, and update us regularly on how that's going.
We'll send this over to them tomorrow.
Okay, great. Okay, next one up is, "Consider Approval of Agreement with Emergency Services Consulting International for a Fire Services Study." I'm going to give that to Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think as the board and the general public is aware, the nature of the volunteer fire service is changing. Unfortunately, the pool of volunteers has been drying up. And this is not a Warminster problem. This is not a Pennsylvania problem. This is a nationwide problem, that the volunteers are just not coming on board in the numbers that they have in the past. So as this happens, we have to look at the impact to our community and to our fire service. A number of weeks ago, we did receive a letter from the Warminster Fire Company talking about how they had concerns about being able to deliver a certain level of service during workdays. Workdays, working hours is the prime time when the volunteers are at work and really unable to respond to calls. We sat down and discussed, Mr. Crowley was at that meeting with the fire chiefs, and we discussed how to move forward. And one of the ideas that we decided to put forward was moving forward with a study. A study really to take account of where we are right now and what options, what path we should be on in the future. That's what's before you today is a agreement with Emergency Services Consulting International to work with us, to work with the fire companies...
I think the mic's loose. Just went out, Ed.
All right, to work with the township staff, to work with the fire companies and anyone else that has a stake in this about where we are and where we need to go. So I would encourage you to ask any questions you have. The cost of the study is $22,000, but we feel it's a necessary first step in heading down this path.
Next, that's $22,000 from general fund, not fire fund?
Correct. That's from our general fund for 2018. Do we lose sound again? So we don't know where this is going to take us. There could be in our future additional programs or compensation to entice volunteer firefighters. There could be paid firefighters that come on board. There's a whole host of options that we can explore. But this is the first step down that path and having that continual conversation on how we supply fire services to the community.
I think, I mean, if the board's inclined, perhaps we can have discussion before we take action on this because this is, this is the beginning, I think, of what's going to be a lengthy discussion. Because it's something we've all known that there's a problem, there's a coverage problem, and it's time that we begin to address it.
No, I agree. I think we should have not only board discussion, public discussion. You know, because when I was able to sit in on that meeting a month or two ago now, you know, the guys and gals over at the companies are doing all they can, but there's going to come a time when we have to decide what the future of the fire services look like. And it builds into a bigger discussion about what we want our community to evolve into, what kind of services we offer, what do we value, this or that. I'm not sitting here right now saying we need to do this or that, but I think it's a vital part of that discussion that I think we're going to be having not only tonight and the next couple of months for the next couple of years.
For quite some time. I mean, I don't think any of us sitting up here claim to be experts in fire service because we're not. But I feel that engaging a professional service to examine our needs and I assume that this company will be cooperating directly with the fire chiefs.
Oh, absolutely. They're the key component.
Correct. And come back with recommendations. And because this is essential service. This is essential service. Our guys give 150 percent of their time and they're volunteers. And unfortunately, and it's a nationwide problem, they have to work during the day. They can't be in town to man the firehouses. And it's not their fault. It's just something that I think as a community, we need to begin to address. It's been, it's been kept on the back burner for too long and it's coming to fruition the beginning now of the discussion. So I wanted to bring it out there before we even take action on this, that everyone understands what we're doing here.
And I got to say too, I mean, not only is the community losing out, you know, because the fire departments aren't having the same number of volunteers that they used to be. I think the public's missing out because, I mean, again, I was very young, I was 17 when I became a volunteer firefighter and I ran with Berwyn. I learned a lot of experiences, a lot of the experiences that I was able to learn from being a volunteer firefighter and then eventually in EMT. I was able to carry that into the military service. I was able to, it changed my mindset so that I can be a successful police officer. So I mean, I think that our youth is missing out. But on that note, and I've said this a couple of times in the past, so it's been a little while since I've said it again, Berwyn at the time allowed us, 17 and 18-year-olds, respond to certain types of fire calls from the high school. And it was something that was very visible within the high school. It was something that, as far as I know, when I was there, there was never any issues with. But on top of that, the people that I ran with, those same students that responded from the high school, from Conestoga High School that went to Berwyn, you know, they, a lot of them wound up moving on to become fire chiefs themselves and engineers and driving the trucks and things like that, and they're there to this day. So I would, especially during this process, I would encourage them to look at that because I think Berwyn just did a write-up within the past year about how successful of a program that they've had in bringing in new, young volunteers. So again, I would, you know, can't miss the opportunity to bring that up again. I think it's, I think it's something that we're missing out on.
And before we take action on this agreement, I know the chiefs are in the room. Does anyone want to add anything before we take action on this? I just want to make sure we're all on board of what we're doing here. Well, please, Mitch. I know you and I had a lengthy discussion on the phone and it was, and it was very productive as well. I enjoyed our conversation. It was very educational for me.
Yeah, just to interject on the study, like we've...
Please tell us who you are.
Mitch Chukrow. I'm the fire chief of Warminster Fire Department. We talked to Greg and I sent the email letting him know our situation. It wasn't like anything new. Every meeting we've had with the emergency services, with the fire marshal, with township managers, we always said we're two to three people away from needing daytime staffing. Now we're zero people away from needing daytime staffing. You guys are addressing the issue and hopefully we can move forward. And we have, we've looked at schools, you know, the kids, volunteerism is dead. Kids don't look at being a fireman as cool anymore. They're not looking to come out. Child labor laws prevent us from actually bringing kids on the fire ground during school hours under the age of 18. So there's a whole lot of, yeah, there's, it goes even deeper. We could have a discussion later on how this affected the fire service.
Is it, because Berwyn's still doing that to this day.
There's, it's very limited what you can do and they changed the laws just recently that make it very difficult to bring junior firemen even on the fire ground. But that's a discussion for a later date. But we have, we've looked at incentive programs. Fire school is very taxing and demanding. It really is a profession. To become a volunteer fireman, you spend more time to be a volunteer than some people do to go on to do their real careers and jobs. So it's a lot to ask. It's still a lot to ask. Luckily, our guys are given 150 percent and we provide a great level of fire protection with us in Hartsfield. Fire school has gotten a lot longer from when I joined 31 years ago to now. It's like double the amount of hours it takes just to get through the basic part of the program. And then you have to go on from there before you know you have thousands of hours and then thousands of hours training every year and leaving your dinner table at Christmas and at Thanksgiving and so on and so forth. But here we are, you know, we're all taking steps backwards. Funding's lighter, people aren't donating to the fire department. Our fundraising is down drastically this year. Our membership's down, kids aren't volunteering. When they do volunteer, once they get to fire school and they realize the demand, a lot of them don't follow through with it. They realize it's more fun to hang with their buddies than it is to go to fire school. And the same thing if you're 25, 30 years old and you move into the township. People come approach, we sit down, we talk to them, tell them what's expected. They go home and tell their spouse that, oh, I'm going to be away from home two nights a week every Saturday for like the next six months. That doesn't go over real good when you have little kids and you're working two jobs. People aren't living, working, and dying in their township anymore, so they're not around during the day doing whatever. It's hard. But I appreciate you guys moving forward with this. And just so everybody's clear, we're not the first one to do this. Every other department almost around us already has career staffing during the day and we are much busier than them. It's a wonder we've held out as long as we have. We run more calls than Northampton, they have daytime firemen. Warrington now has daytime firefighters. We're busier than them. Horsham's had daytime firemen for 30-plus years already. So it just goes, keeps going like we're the next township to fall to it. So it's not like we failed, the whole system's failing throughout the country.
So let me frame this up, chief, that we do this, this study, we move forward with this, I'm assuming that we will, and then we will, we'll be together and discuss options from the study or outside option, something that's not in the study that you might think, hey, wait a minute.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because we're open to discussion.
Yeah, we're looking forward to the study. We know from seeing other studies, it's how it's going to come out within reason and we'll move forward from there and the funding part will be the hard part for the township.
Well, it's essential service. I mean, it is, so.
Yep. If there's a fire during the day, I'm sure they want a fire truck to show up.
Absolutely.
And let the people know that a fire truck will show up. We're not saying that it's not going to happen. There's mutual aid packs in agreement between us and Hartsfield as well as every other company surrounding us in Bucks and Montgomery County. There's an absolute failsafe that there will be a fire truck there.
Right.
It's just how many fire trucks will show up with two or three firemen instead of six firemen.
And we have firehouses within the township and someone might come from Willow Grove or might come from...
Correct. You'll see Willow Grove here, you'll see Warrington, you'll see Horsham. Northampton even comes down with the trucks. We have mutual aid packs.
But we would like to get back to a point where we see Warminster.
Oh, no, you will always see...
How we get there is...
Right, exactly. Any other questions for the fire department?
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that you guys were on board with what we're doing here and we're on the same page.
We are, thank you.
No, thank you. We appreciate what you guys do. We really do.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. I was going to say something, but he was still talking. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Chief Gacho, I missed the breakfast though, the Mother's Day breakfast. You think we can get back to that at some point? That was, that was fun.
Well, I'm Gacho, I'm the fire chief of Hartsfield Fire Company. And as it goes with what Mitch was saying, unfortunately, those breakfasts go along with everything else. That's another day of the volunteers being out of their house. And we were very successful with those, that fundraiser, but it was Mother's Day. So on top of all the training requirements and everything else we're asking of the guys like Mitch was saying, now we're asking all the guys, hey, leave your wife for Mother's Day and come up and put in extra hours to do fundraising. It was a great community event, public loved it. Unfortunately, it came down to dollars and cents that we weren't even raising enough money to cover really the cost. We'd just barely do it and it would have been better off to send a hat around the room. We would have made more money from the guys in the firehouse and everybody would have gotten to save all that time and be, take their wives out on Mother's Day.
Right.
It's just another burden, I hate to use it that way, but another, you know, something that you're asking the guys to do on top of it. And it's just more volunteer hours.
I want to mention too, while you're here, this year was the first one I missed because I was on vacation, but you guys do a tremendous job with your 9/11 ceremony. It's, you're to be commended. It's terrific.
Thank you.
Every year it's moving, very moving.
Thank you. Mr. McPhillips was there, Mr. Schuster was there. It was started obviously right after 9/11, so we've been doing it for, since then. Ed Pfeifer, the president of the department, really gets kudos for starting that up and what we have out there, the memorial that we have, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. And I'm sure we'll be, the township, we're going to be in a lot of discussions for this year, years ago.
Yeah, yeah. We're all in this together, so we're going to have to work at it and make it happen.
Thank you, chief. Thank you.
We have the utmost respect for all the volunteers in our fire department. You do a phenomenal job and hopefully this study will provide solutions so we will have adequate protection for our residents. And just want to thank all of you for what you do.
And with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to consider approval of agreement with Emergency Services Consulting International for a fire services study. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley. Any further discussion?
I just, yeah, it's, what it boils down to me is that this is the first investment in, in looking at what our future services are going to be. You know, we've had an era of suburban renewal here the last five, six, seven, eight years of where we're seeing a lot of new homes being built, a lot of businesses coming to town. Part of the reason is that our services are strong and remain strong, that we have a good EMS services, good fire, good police. And as, if we want to keep building $600,000 homes and people coming in and buying them, I think we're going to have to invest in the services that support those people. So I'll be interested to see what exactly comes out of the study, but I think it's a vital step to ensure that Warminster continues on a path of, that it's been on, of growth and renewal and that we don't slip into the suburban decay that you've seen in some of other areas, the collar counties, so, thank you.
Any other comment from the board?
I think the bottom line is at the board, it's our responsibility to provide the health, safety, and reliability of the residents of Warminster. And so I'm looking forward to the findings of this study.
Absolutely. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll be having continued. You'll keep us updated on the progress?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, next up is item D, 2019 budget overview.
Thank you.
I think I'm going to need a drink for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's up there? As we, as I did last year, I decided to go ahead and first make a kind of framework presentation with my budget. It's a framework that doesn't just dive into the details but gives a really high-level overview of where we are and what I'm proposing. We've been talking for over a year now about the financial situation and the causes behind it. And the one thing I'd like to stress tonight is the can that's been kicked down the road many times is really grown into a monumental problem. And it's something that this board, this township, is going to have to deal with over the next year or two. So hopefully, working together, we can put in place solutions or find some alternatives that are palatable to everyone involved and get to work on solving this problem. So first, I want to talk a little bit about the history of where we have in the recent past and some options for us to go ahead and consider before I go ahead and go into the budget that I'm going to be proposing. As you know, we have a practice of budgeted deficits. Until recently, those deficits haven't been realized. We've been lucky through a lot of the one-time fees that have been coming in that the deficit has been hidden. However, starting in 2017, the deficit was realized, nearly $300,000. Also, in the summer of 2017, we worked with PFM to create a five-year budget model. And what that model showed was increasing expenditures with flat revenues. And when you have a situation like that, you're eating into your fund balance. And you'll keep eating into your fund balance if no remedial action is taken to balance the budget. For the 2018 budget, the budget we're in right now, during discussions, the board chose not to increase the mill rate and adopted a budget with a general fund deficit of $1.6 million, which I referenced earlier. We do feel that deficit is going to be realized. The board also chose to reopen that budget and reexamine things in January of this year. A mill rate increase was recommended, but the board decided not to take action and allow the budget to remain in deficit. Also in 2018, it was recommended to enter into the DCED Early Intervention Program. This is a program designed to keep municipalities away from financial distress, away from Act 47. They would work with a financial consultant to come in and present various options to the township. The board considered that and rejected that due to the cost of that program. There are also some projects that have an impact on our finances. In 2014, I recognize it started before then, but really in 2014, there was authorization given and grants applied for to develop Warminster Community Park. Short-term financing is needed for that project and development of that park is going to necessitate more operating costs. When you go ahead and put in new fields or new features, there are costs that go along with that, whether it be replacing or repairing items or the personnel needed to go ahead and maintain that property, there are going to be additional costs. Also, in 2017, the board did decide to purchase Shenandoah Woods. We estimate that project, the cost, $2 to $3 million for the purchase and reclamation of that property. Currently, we've put $100,000 down as a down payment. We have not moved forward with the closing of that property yet. Financing of $7 million was secured in 2017 for these projects in the form of a drawdown loan. And additional funding is anticipated in 2020 and beyond. And that's in two areas. One is the operational cost that I referred to for Warminster Community Park and that expansion. And the other is the debt service. We anticipate those debt service costs mostly to be coming online in 2020 from the build out of Warminster Community Park, from the possible construction of a stormwater basin, and also for the purchase and reclamation of Shenandoah Woods. That debt would of course be offset by any grants received and we're working, we actually have grants in hand for Warminster Community Park and we're working to get any grant we possibly can. for Warminster Community Park, and we're working to get any grant we possibly can to offset the cost of Shenandoah Woods. There's been a couple of operational things which have had an impact on the budget over the last few years, both positively and negatively from a financial standpoint. One, in 2016, three police officers were added to the force. That did increase the staffing level and, of course, the overall costs. We've also outsourced the entire LNI administration operation. The entire golf course has been outsourced. And recreational programming has also been outsourced. So those are some of the major things that we've done in our operations which have both a positive and negative impact. In terms of the outsourcing, it shows that we are looking at any option we possibly can to contain costs. I'm gonna be talking about a number, there are a number of funds in the budget, and I'm not gonna go into all of them. I'm gonna point out some right now, eight funds which I am calling solvent funds. These are funds I'm not gonna put a lot of time and effort into talking about. The funds are fine. There's no issues there, and so I don't think we need to address them. If you want to talk about them in detail later on, happy to do so, but this is not where the problem lies. You have the ambulance fund, which has a dedicated millage to fund the contract with Central Bucks EMS. You have the fire fund, which also has a dedicated millage, which is split proportionally between Hartsfield and Warminster Fire Companies. One of the things I am proposing is just a slight increase in the mill rate for the fire fund. And that's because, right now, the workers' comp for the volunteer firefighters is in the general fund. It really belongs in the fire fund, but if we were to put it over to the fire fund, we would be taking money away from the volunteer fire companies. To avoid that, we're increasing, we're proposing an increase in the millage, .23 mills, to keep the fire companies whole. Library, the library fund has a dedicated millage sufficient for their operations. Sanitation, that's not a tax fund, but they do have a budget which is supported by user fees. The budget you'll see will be completely reworked once we get the bids in for the waste hauling. So we'll adjust that, and then we'll figure out what the fee needs to be for every user and also taking account the senior discount. There would likely be a fee adjustment. I can't tell if it'd be more or less, but we have to wait and see what numbers we get and which option you select. The next solvent fund is golf. That's also a self-sufficient fund, an enterprise fund. That's entirely funded by user fees there. The capital reserve fund is a pass-through from the general fund. That fund is fine. The highway traffic fund is also a pass-through fund, so anytime someone takes out a traffic light, a signal, or one of our signs, which happens incredibly frequently, more frequently than I've ever seen anywhere else, we pay for it, the repairs or the replacement, from this fund. And then later on, we get the insurance money from the person that caused the accident, assuming they've been located and they have insurance. That money flows into that fund. And the last solvent fund is liquid fuels. Every year, we get a state allocation, which we set our budget to. That is primarily used for road improvements, curbing, and some other supplies related to maintenance of roads. So those are the solvent funds. Here are the funds which are concerned. And I'm gonna talk about the deficits and the cost drivers in each one of those funds. The first one is the general fund. This is the biggest one that we always talk about. It was budgeted for a $1.6 million deficit in 2018, and we're projecting that we're gonna hit that in 2018. One of the biggest cost drivers is the increasing MMO. The three police officers that were added in 2016 also adds to the deficit. And finally, we're seeing reduced revenues from those one-time development fees. These are not the only reasons, or only stressors on the budget, on the fund, but these are some of the largest ones which are having an impact.
Okay, let me stop you there.
Yes.
The reduction in one-time fees, that is, the school properties that were sold and all the other development we've been blessed with.
Correct.
Transfer tax, building permits, which was a substantial amount that we got in for a couple of years.
Correct. Those are substantial amounts, but it's just that, a one-time fee that comes in and it's not ongoing from year to year, like a property tax.
Right.
Can I also mention one thing?
Yeah.
So one of the common things I see on Facebook and I hear from the public is that there's this misconception that, you know, when you bring in, you know, 35 new homes of new residents, that's gonna increase the amount of money that we bring in through revenue significantly. It's really just a drop in the bucket, and that's not really a driving force to saving the township's budget, right?
Correct. If you were to say, Greg, we want to contain costs, I would say residential development is not gonna get you there.
Right.
And in fact, in a later slide, you'll see how actually, how little is brought in from the millage that we collect. It's not as much as people think, I would imagine.
But we did pick up several million dollars from the fees, from the transfer of the properties.
No doubt about it, and that's what's been keeping us alive over the last couple of years.
Yeah, I just mentioned that because, like I said, there's a misconception. I mean, there's not much more to bill anyway, but when people think about, you know, the old-school properties and some of these other recent developments, they think, you know, there's a disconnect. Why are we not seeing the significant increase in revenue as a result of that? And that's the reason why, is because we've had the one-time fee.
And I'll jump into that in the next slide. I think it'll become a little more clearer. Also, the expenses that get added. You know, we look at the township side. We're not looking at the school side. So every time you go ahead and build a new house and you have 2.5 kids added to the school system, that doesn't appear in our books, but appears in the schools' books, and from a community standpoint, adds additional cost. So the next fund, the Park and Rec Fund, we did budget for a $135,000 deficit in 2018. We're only projecting a $26,000 deficit. Karen's been doing a phenomenal job containing costs wherever she can. Historically, though, we have underfunded that budget, and we have been using fund balance, and that fund balance has been dwindling. We do anticipate that budget to grow, and right now, we're estimating around $380,000 per year, starting in 2020. And that really has to do with Warminster Community Park and the additional manpower that has to be brought on to maintain it, the additional repairs that have to be done. Everything goes along with the park. Some of that is also Shenandoah Woods. If that purchase is completed, Shenandoah Woods does have to be maintained. We're not talking about building it out, but there obviously is maintenance activities that go on there. And the last fund, the debt fund, we had budgeted a $90,000 deficit in 2018. We're only projecting a $28,000 deficit to occur in 2018. And I've talked about this earlier. The debt for Warminster Community Park, Shenandoah Woods, and that basin would increase expenses by about $500,000 per year prior to any grant funds that are received. We do anticipate grant funds coming in that are gonna offset that, so I imagine that number is gonna be lower than that, probably significantly lower, but that is gonna start up in 2020. MMO is something we talk about a lot. And the MMO, for those in the public that don't know, is the Minimum Municipal Obligation. This is how much we are mandated at a minimum to put into our pension funds. And you can see on this graph what's occurred, or what we should have been putting in over the last number of years. What this is, is the Combined Pension MMO, so that's both the uniform and non-uniform pension funds, putting in what we should be putting in, assuming a rate of return of 8%. And you can see, just in the span of like five years, it jumps $1.1, $1.2 million. That is a huge hit to take on approximately $15 million budget.
Four mills.
Yes. So these are staggering numbers. So why is it increasing? Well, it increases when three things happen, essentially. When you put in less than the market value, when you get an average return of less than 8%, or when police staffing is increasing. And I say police staffing because in 2013 and beyond, all non-uniform employees are now in a defined contribution plan. All three of those things that are listed up there have been occurring over the last few years. And that's what's been adding to the MMO rising. Next slide talks about what's been going on with our general fund balance. You can see, starting in 2013, it's relatively healthy, holding at about $4 million. It begins to tick up in 2015 and 2016 as a lot of this one-time development revenue is coming in. And what that's doing is hiding that deficit that actually existed there. 2017, you see the drop-off from that approximately $300,000 deficit that was realized. Then, projecting to 2018, that's the $1.6 million deficit, which brings us closer to $3 million. Now, if we were to adopt the budget I'm proposing and not put any tax increase in there, this is what you would end up in 2019, under $1 million, which is incredibly low. It presents cash flow issues. It would be problematic if we ever wanted to go ahead and get a rating to issue debt, which we're not really talking about right now. But the bigger problem is what's not on that chart, and that's what happens in 2020. You can see the trend. In 2020, we're out of money. So been looking at ways to go ahead and reduce expenditures. We look at different options. One of the options which we've talked about is transferring stormwater operations to the municipal authority. That would eliminate $100,000 annually from the general fund. It'd also eliminate that stormwater basin by Shenandoah Woods. That would save about $900,000 total in debt service, eliminate all future stormwater costs. And this board has already given consensus to move forward with that, and we've been having active discussions with the authority. The other option is service reductions. Where we are right now, we're pretty much at minimum staffing, I would say, for a viable operation, but we're gonna be looking at other areas to cut and what we can absorb. Any of these cuts, obviously, are gonna be a reduction in service, and the community is gonna start to feel these impacts over time. Switching over to revenue and looking at enhancing that, you have a few options there. You have the general fund balance, which, of course, is limited. You can only use that until you run out of money. The second thing is the operating reserve. A number of years ago, after Warminster was recovering from a bad financial period, approximately half a million dollars was put aside in an operating reserve account, where it sat for emergency purposes. So that's there. The last option for revenue enhancement is mill rate increases. Under second-class township, we have a cap of our general fund at 14 mills. It's currently 11.09. And the court can approve up to five more mills above that for a total of 19.
And no more than that.
No more than that. The only way to get above 19 is through a referendum. So switching over to the highlights of what I'm gonna propose. And when I put together the budget, I just looked at two very simple, straightforward goals. Number one was to balance the budget and not use any more of our fund balance. Want to preserve that asset, make sure we don't have any cash flow issues, and do the right thing. Just make sure our revenues equal our expenditures. The second thing was fund the police pension at market value. Put in what we should be putting in into the police pension. Underfunding of the pension is what got us into this hole. Putting in the right amount is what's gonna help get us out of this hole. So those two things combined, I think, are essential to solving the budgetary situation that we're in right now. Now, the budget you're gonna see, which will be released shortly, probably in a week, week and a half, you are gonna see some expenditure and service reductions in there. I wouldn't call them extreme. They will be felt. It will impact, but we're not talking about slashing to the bone here. I hope to avoid that in discussions with our budget. I'm also gonna propose using that operating reserve, $544,000, not in 2019, but actually in this year, to contribute to our police pension. And I'll talk a little bit more of that in a bit. There's also gonna be a proposed mill rate increase. And all of this is assuming that we do have a successful transfer of stormwater operations to the authority. If for some reason it does not occur, those expenses would fall back to us and obviously would exasperate the situation. So operating reserve. Right now, that asset, approximately $544,000, doesn't bring any value to the township. It's earning minimal interest and sitting in an account. In 2016 and 2017, the township actually contributed at or near-market value into the police pension fund. My predecessor, Mr. Weisner, although had us on the smoothing method in 2016, did have a contingency pension payment in 2016, which brought us to near-market value. If you recall, in 2017, I proposed and you adopted a budget which did fund the police pension at market value. Two good years right there. Also, in 2017, the market was on fire, as you all know. Our pension fund almost hit 17% return, which is phenomenal. However, when constructing the 2018 budget, for budgetary reasons, it was decided to keep, to move the contribution back to the smoothing method. So what I'm recommending is taking all of that operating reserve and in this year, 2018, putting it in the police pension fund, which would put us near-market value. What I'm trying to do is put together and continue a very good run that we've been having. If we did that, we'd have three years of near-market value. We'd have a year of an incredibly high return. These are things which can help us get us out of this hole and keep up the momentum. I do have one caveat on that, though. If the board doesn't put in place an adequate increase in the mill rate, I would be very hesitant to take that $544,000 and dump it into the pension fund, because you're eliminating a safety net. So here's what that would look like. On the graph on the right, we're assuming that we're gonna go ahead... I'm sorry, the graph on the left, we're assuming that we're gonna go ahead and in 2019, fund the police pension at market value. Put in what we should be putting. Now, the blue line represents what we should be putting into the funds. The red line represents what we have been or were budgeted to put in the funds. Every time you see a gap between those lines, that is the unfunded liability. That is the kicking the can down the road that you're gonna have to address in some other year, which is why that line keeps escalating. You can see, 2016, 2017, those lines are getting closer. That's because we were making appropriate, not, I wouldn't say appropriate payments, but close to appropriate payments. Now, in 2018, you see them diverge again. And that's because in 2018, we're back on the smoothing method and not making that contribution. If you look at the graph on the right, that's what happens if you put the $544,000 operating reserve into the pension fund, the police pension fund, this year. Doesn't completely solve the problem, but you get a lot closer. Again, that's assuming at the end there that you are switching over to the market value in 2019. So you can see a big difference in how we have had some success over the last couple of years, and I would hate to lose that momentum. So now, the unpleasant part. Not that the rest of this has been pleasant. In the general fund, to accomplish all of this, to accomplish the two goals that I set out, you're looking at an approximate 7.6-mill increase. Obviously, as I stated earlier, you would need the court's permission to exceed 14 mills. However, this would eliminate the deficit that exists and contribute market value for the police pension. I'd like to point out that Warminster Township, and for all those listening at home, we're talking specifically about the township, not the county, not the school district. Warminster Township has only had two mill rate increases in the last 15 years, the last one being in 2011. This is the chart I was referencing earlier, but what the real impact is of any increase. We'll start on the left and talk about the assessment. What you bought your home for is not relevant in this example. It's assessed at. That's what your taxes are calculated at. And the average resident assessment in Warminster Township is $25,553. There's a reason why it's so low, and that's a whole nother discussion, and it's probably worth having, but not right now. It has to do with assessments and common level ratios and how the county does things. the county does things, but that is the average residential assessment. So if you were to increase one mill, so we'll look at that line, you would see that the annual increase would be $25.50 or $2.13 a month. If you go down to the bottom and say we're going to increase eight mills, that would be an annual increase of $204 and a monthly increase of about 17. So I put this in there because I know there's going to be a lot of people out there throwing out the percentages of what it is. And if you look at just the percentages, it can be scary. It could also give a different interpretation, a different view of things. But this shows the actual numbers that we're talking about. Also, of course, it depends on your individual assessment. If you're assessed higher than 25,000 or lower than 25,000, that would move the calculation as well. But this is a very good approximation and really gives you an idea of what the real impact is for any kind of mill rate increase. At the end of the day, you're looking at a few things here, a few options, to get a balanced budget. There's the use of fund balance or operating reserve until it's gone, a mill rate increase, or sell a major asset. And I put a strike through that because this board had considered that in the past and decided not to go down that path. On the expense side, you have transferring the stormwater to the authority. There's a green check mark next to that because we're in the process of doing that. The other option is to cut the budget by approximately 15%. That's what we're talking about to balance this budget and make sure that we don't run out of money. So what happens if we do nothing? Well, as I've shown, fund balance would likely be depleted in 2019 or early 2020, probably closer to early 2020. And solvency becomes a real possibility, as does entry into the Act 47 program from the state. I would say that this is not a path that you want to go on. It's a path filled with uncertainty. It's a path that could bring all kinds of repercussions on the community. It's a path that you may lose some or a lot of control at some of the things at the local level when you enter some of these programs. So what are the next steps? As I said, the full proposed budget will be issued shortly. We're refining the numbers right now. There's still a few things out there. The budget's always kind of changing. One thing we're waiting for that we know will come in is our health insurance renewal. We haven't gotten that yet. We've budgeted a 10% increase. We think it's usually lower than that, but that's one thing that's outstanding. But there are always fine tuning that's happening, and will continue throughout the whole budget process. Terms of a timeline, we are planning on the 4th to have a budget workshop. On the 18th, you have your regular board meeting, which of course you're free to discuss the budget then. On the November 1st, which we typically wouldn't meet on, I'm also leaving that as a possible budget workshop if the board feels it's necessary. You'd be looking at adopting a preliminary budget on November 15th and adopting a final budget on the 20th of December. Once the budget's turned over to you, myself and the staff await your guidance. We're here to work with you and provide any feedback or any assistance that we possibly can. We know these are tough decisions that are going to have to be made. We know that there is a lot of implications and a lot of, you know, a lot of consternation that's going to occur in going over the various options. But we want to work together, do everything we can to support you during this time. Last thing I'll say is, you know, now's the time for some action. We're at the proverbial cliff. We're looking at it. It's in the distance. We need to go ahead and take steps now to make sure we don't go over that cliff. I do not believe we're in a situation that is impossible to get ourselves out of. I believe that working together, we can find ways to go ahead, put together a reasonable budget that can help get us out of this mess and really puts in place a long-term solution. So that is my framework presentation. I am sorry it is not exactly good news. I'm happy to answer any of your questions now. However, we do have that budget workshop coming up, and I expect we'll have more in-depth discussions then. All department heads will be at that budget workshop, so you can directly ask them any questions about their department and their operations. But again, we're all here to work together, and I do believe that we can find appropriate solutions and put in place a budget that works for the community.
I was surprised not to hear anything or any mention about the budget board.
That's my question. You just stole my thunder.
I read your mind.
When can we expect any recommendation from the budget committee?
Sure. I know that they are drafting some recommendations now, or I believe the way they're going to do it is they're going to give a list of options, and of those options are going to put in some that are recommended. The issue with the budget committee right now is it was just started at the wrong time, and they just started getting ramped up at the same time I was doing the budget. And I had that conversation with them and said, you have to understand, I can't stop for what you're doing, because I have a timeline that I have to meet. And then they understood that.
So they'll have more impact in next years?
Well, my plan is this presentation and some of the highlights of the budget, I am going to present them at their meeting next week.
Okay.
And interested to hear their thoughts. And I would invite them out to the October 4th meeting, you know, and hear what their thoughts are as well. You know, they've been giving the presentations and the information about how we got to this place. So they're pretty briefed and pretty informed on all of that.
This is October 4th in this room?
October 4th, 7:00 PM, this room, yes.
These are members of the community. They are not in an elected position, so they are, been brought up to speed. And so I agree with you and encourage the public if they kind of want to hear about what's going on, the proposals, they should come out.
Thanks for the good news, Greg.
Sorry.
I guess I'm going to reserve comment for when we do the budget workshop.
I'm not sure to say right now.
Yeah, it's a good, excellent presentation, though. Excellent. I mean, I think you covered everything. Gives us, as board members, stuff to noodle on for the next two weeks, and anyone's free to meet with the staff.
And one thing I will point out, as I usually do, this presentation, this budget is not a product of me. This has been a lot of work. John has been instrumental, Catherine, Amanda, all department heads. As usual, it is a group effort to go ahead and put these budgets together.
All right. Okay. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move on to professionals' reports. Township manager's report, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have my written report in case there's any questions. The three things I was going to mention tonight have already been mentioned. I was going to compliment everyone on the successful e-waste event. We're going to be looking to continue that, of course, and always looked at ways to improve the traffic. We moved it over to Tennant this time, and yet there were still traffic issues. Also, I was going to mention the Columbus Day Golf Tournament. It really is a great day and a great opportunity to see me embarrass myself on the course, so I invite anyone to come out for that. And lastly, thank the Hartsfield Fire Company for their 9/11 ceremony, which is always something to see and a very good, a good thing for the community. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Anything, anyone have anything for Mr. Schuster?
None.
Okay, solicitors' report, Mr. Bartle.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, as many of you know, and everybody that has been here tonight knows, most of the items that we report on in our solicitors' report have already been handled this evening. So we provided a seven-page solicitors' report to you, and I'm sure you all have that, and I'm certainly available to answer any questions you may have. I do want to point out one particular item, though, that's listed in that report on about page five, the Ben Wilson Senior Activity Center. The township is working with Ben Wilson Senior Activity Center to apply to the zoning hearing board to request a special exception to allow a digital billboard sign at the senior activity center. Accordingly, we're going to request authorization this evening to apply to the zoning hearing board and present the application on behalf of the township at the September, at this September 20 meeting of the board of supervisors. So we're going to ask you this evening to pass a motion that authorizes our firm and the township to file the special exception request to the zoning hearing board and authorizes our firm to present the case of the township to the zoning hearing board in favor of the application. So.
We need to take action right now on that.
Yes. Yes, yes, sir.
What do you have?
So we need to go to the zoning hearing board. We own the Ben Wilson Center. We need to go to the zoning hearing board to go ahead and ask for their authorization for a special exception. We're the applicant.
We have to pay the attorneys to do that.
You do, yeah. Where will this billboard be located on the property?
It's going to be located in the same location that it is right now. Their current sign will just get replaced with a smaller version of a digital billboard sign.
They have a sign out on.
They have a sign out on Delmont, and they're just replacing it with.
Because there's also another sign as you go into the.
They're only replacing the one on Delmont, with the digital one. That's it. So I met with Karen Forrester yesterday, and that's the one they're switching out.
So we have to do this. We have to this.
Yes, by our zoning code, we do.
You represent ourselves against ourselves.
Yes.
We do.
The zoning hearing board essentially sits as the judge, and we're the applicants in the matter. So due to the fact that this was not on this evening's agenda, you probably want to pick public comment as well.
You wouldn't want to do that pro bono, would you?
Oh, son.
Don't ask.
Welcome to the club.
Guess we need a motion.
Send one to the apprentices, will you? So I guess we need a motion, right, Mr. Bartle?
Yes. If there's no comment, you'll.
I'll ask for public comment before we take action. Is there a motion?
The, the motion is to file the application, as I've indicated, and to authorize us to present the case at the zoning hearing board.
Is there a motion? Mr. McPherson, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley, any further discussion? No? Any from the public? Okay, see, not a quality question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Air vote's aye. Keep this up, keep this posted on that, will you?
Certainly will.
Anything, anyone else have anything for Mr. Bartle? Okay. Next up is engineers' report. Mr. Kenner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have our report for September. One comment I'll make is for planning commission coming up, I guess, September 25th. Not a large project, but you have 625 Mary Street, which is a preliminary final land development application for about a 5,000-square-foot light manufacturing building. There is a small vacant parcel actually on Mary Street. This is close to where we have a drainage issue we were walking around. It's, requires six parking spaces in about 5,000-square-foot building, so.
It's on for it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's pretty clean. They, they'll be in planning commission on September 25th. I assume you'll see that at your October meeting. We have about, in the pipeline or just issued letters, about six to seven projects. So there are stuff coming down the, down the pike, most of which you've already approved, that we're trying to get to construction. A lot of developers, you have your big one at 1270 Murns Row and Adopters property that he'd like to start moving dirt this fall. I got involved in that very heavily, just to keep that moving, along with Amanda. She's done a great job keeping some of the larger projects moving. Obviously, they like to get some work done before winter hits and try to be building homes early in the spring. So that letter went out today, along with a bunch of other smaller projects, two of which you saw tonight. So the only other comment I'd like to make is, I know I received numerous comments over, probably over the summer, about the Burger King bump at the driveway.
Yeah.
Okay? I'm not taking credit for any of it. Amanda did a great job talking directly with the PennDOT representative. I was notified by the contractor recently that they will be, they worked out, PennDOT approved what to install. I don't have everything yet, but I did hear that that will be installed. PennDOT will require something to be added between the pavement and the concrete. They're not going to remove anything. They're just going to add something. I'm not sure how long it will last, but, you know, that was a PennDOT decision. We were not involved as a township, but Amanda did a good, do a good job on trying to get the local official out there to put some pressure on the contractor and owner, so.
Yeah, thank you, Amanda. That was actually brought to my attention. I was stuck in traffic there, and I was looking at, I was watching cars coming out. I thought, they got a point.
That, and when Lidl's going to be, you know, start construction, which I don't have an answer for.
Kmart, they're the, you know, they're the biggies.
That stopped. But anyway, that's all you have. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Take a shake, seems to be moving along.
October. They're opening.
Oh, are they? Okay, good, good.
We don't have a date yet, but October.
I got it. So I've gotten some complaints, and I got to have to agree. I mean, that building looks like it's in a prison jumpsuit. It's black and gray. I mean, I don't know what they were thinking. I know that's their.
Their style.
Yeah, but I have gotten phone calls on it. I will see them. But I look forward to the menu.
How's the car wash doing, by the way?
I see they're moving a little dirt around finally.
Yeah. Not sure what's going on with them.
Seems they're running again off again, it seems.
And that's what happens. We have a lot of these right now. The smaller ones, they stop and start. They just, you know, they don't have the big contractors coming in. They're trying to do a lot of stuff on their own. You know, financially, it's difficult. I mean, it really is a struggle, and it actually puts a burden, a lot more burden on the township staff than us to try to help keep them going.
And people ask us about why. I tell people, I can't go over there with a gun and force them to start working on the building. I mean, they have their approvals, and it's, you know, you can't go over there and force them at gunpoint to start their construction. I'm sure you'll know immediately when they're ready to start, because they'll be contacting staff, so.
Whatever influence Amanda has.
Keep up the good work. It seems that our land development team is running pretty smoothly, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a biggie. Does anyone else have anything for Mr. Kenner? Okay, next one up is township manager announcement of upcutting agenda items. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As already mentioned, we will have a budget workshop on October 4th. October 18th, you should expect to see a proposal to move towards a single-duty tow hauler and bid out that accordingly. Of course, you can always talk about the budget at that time. We anticipate to be in a position to have you award the bid for Auditor. Today was a deadline for bids received. And also, you had authorized the advertisement of the animal control ordinance and agreements tonight. We anticipate that would be on the 18th agenda for final approval. And lastly, if you'll permit me a little indulgence here, I just wanted to say, as I saw the firefighters, I, you know, one of the people, the category of people that often gets left out in our thanks are the spouses, whether it be the spouse of a firefighter, a police officer who's doing their shift, a public works employee who's out on removing snow. These people are often called away at inopportune times and, you know, to serve the public, and they do a phenomenal job. And sometimes it's the spouses that have to put up with that burden, and they understand because they know how important it is to be a public servant. My wife is one of those people. She completely understands, and I mention all of this because today is our 10th anniversary. And as, thank you, as is typical with any birthday or anniversary, I am at a public meeting. So I just wanted to thank her and all the spouses for putting all, putting up with all of us that have to go out in the middle of the night and go to these meetings or do whatever job we have to do for the public. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster, and happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Next up is the second round of public comment. Is there any public comment?
No.
Seeing done. Move right along to supervisors' comments. Ms. Fresca Tour.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank our board, our professionals. I think we've made some very necessary and appropriate decisions tonight to solve some of the issues that we have in our township, one being the opioid crisis and reimbursing, getting reimbursement from some money with the law firm of Scott &amp; Scott, who I think will do a phenomenal job for us. Secondly, doing the consulting service, hiring the consulting service for our fire emergency services and finding some solutions. It's a shame that we don't have the volunteers that we had in the past with the younger folks. Maybe they'll come up with some solutions to be able to engage some of them, and maybe some other solutions, too, that will, that will keep our residents safe with fire protection. Lastly, I just wanted to comment. I attended the 9/11 service, which I normally do every year, and I have to say that it is a beautiful ceremony, and they really pay homage to our fallen heroes. I talked to some folks that were there from neighboring townships, and what I found really interesting is that a lot of them don't have memorial services that we do. So we should be really grateful that we have that time, that we can go and pay homage to our fallen heroes. I want to thank the Hartsfield Fire. I want to thank the Hartsville Fire Company for doing a phenomenal job with that memorial service. And that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Fresketour. Mr. Monroe?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. McPhillips? Mr. Crowley?
Well, first, I want to congratulate Mr. Schuster on his anniversary.
Thank you.
I've met your wife, you definitely outkicked your coverage there, so.
True.
Yeah, well done, well done. I did the same thing, and my bride's celebrating her birthday on this weekend, so I just want to wish you a very happy birthday. Also, you know, I look forward to the public being involved in the discussions coming up, because it's a lot about where we're going to go as a township. You know, I personally believe that we're on the upswing. We have been for a while now, and I think we need to build, grow on it, and it's going to be a discussion a lot of us have to have. That also being said, there's some things I think as a township we can do better. And, you know, there's, you know, like, I won't go into the fireworks, constant setting off of fireworks for no reason. But the other day, over not too far from this building, somebody shot a cat for no reason. Shot a cat, and not only did they shoot the cat, the cat was a pet of a family I happen to know because one of the children is special needs, so they, some, you know, jerk shot a defenseless cat for whatever purpose, and so there's a kid with special needs who downed one pet. And it's, you know, they're looking for any information. So if anybody knows anything out there, please make sure you let the department know, because, you know, we've got a great town, and in every town, there's always some issues. But we can do better. So if anybody knows anything, please say something, thanks.
Thank you. Crowley, the only announcement I had, or comments I had today, I had, and I forgot to mention it in announcements, today I had the pleasure of having lunch over at the Adult Care Center, which is across from Ann's Choice. It's a really nice facility, it's privately run, and what it is, it's a place where dementia patients are cared for. It's a place where a family member can drop a family member off there for a couple of hours to get a break, and I have personal experience with that, because my mother had spent several years in a dementia ward. My father could have used a place like that, you know, while he was trying to care for her. But they do a great job over there, they're a great staff. It's like the third time I've been over there to hang out with them, and I really had a good time. And I want to thank them for having me, and I'm available anytime to stop by. And I also want to wish Chief Donnelly a happy and safe Irish Fall Festival in North Wildwood. I'll be looking for texting some pictures from you. I'm going to be sitting, I'm going to be sitting this one out, chief. Have a good time, be safe. And that's all I have. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion with your, Mr. McPhillips, meeting adjourned.